We had open doors. I hope that we will deal with that. Because it's bad enough that they have to walk. How are they going to learn that to walk? They didn't stand outside of the school just walking in. So hopefully you'll have that in your contingency plans. But I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Ms. Gill.
Norrine Gill, 192 Coventry Highway 5. The busing issue didn't just start now. I moved into Lakewood in 1972 on June 7th. The next week I was at the school for a meeting. And in 1984, thirty-two years ago, the board had said, "Children from Rain Tree are going to walk and children from Coventry Square are going to walk." And I said to the board, "This is discrimination." I hired a lawyer, Mr. Donald Newmuro from Flintville. And before it was all over, they realized, "Whoops, there was a mistake. Children are busing." Then we went back to 1989. My husband sat on this school board. And his thing was, all the board members got the notion that they're going to sell off all the buses. They're getting rid of them. They're going to contract. My husband was in the business administration. He said, "We don't want to do that." "Oh, yes, we do. We need money." Well, the money was always hidden in the healthcare, okay? They knew they got the money and they wanted to use it for something else. What they wanted to use it for? More people were coming into town. More people couldn't walk. We need courtesy busing. So wow, courtesy busing comes to the forefront. Also, coming to the forefront was a plan for Lakewood. It was called Impact 2000. By the time and the year would be 2000, that the religious people would have taken over the whole town of Lakewood. Now, everybody thought this was ridiculous, okay? I'm nothing against any children, any school. I'm all for these children. I don't want to see anyone. But I'm going to tell you now, our town fathers have failed us. They appoint the planning board, which every member on the planning board knows who I am. Everyone on the zoning board knows who I am because I've been there also. So the picture comes full circle. It's like the dominoes, okay? The town fathers have failed us. They appoint the planning board. They appoint the zoning board. I'm telling you now, we cannot sustain the building. We just can't sustain it. Someone is inviting people to come from Brooklyn to Lakewood. Who's inviting these people? Let's figure this out. How many more homes can we build? What's going to happen when the kids walk to school and that traffic starts? It's going to be cold in the morning. The people don't shovel their sidewalks. So the kids are going to walk in the street. The police are not going to be able to handle or they're not going to have enough crossing guards. The police won't be able to handle that because they'll be handling the traffic. We, not me, but this town has failed. Our town fathers has failed this community. I asked for a moratorium years ago and I was told, "You can't tell someone not to have children." I said, "I never said that." I said, "We need time to figure this out." I was on the master plan. Smart growth. I attended all the meetings. We have a major problem.
Ms. Miller.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cam Miller and I'm a resident of Lakewood, New Jersey. A few of the issues that I had were brought up already. And I'm a mother and grandmother of kids with the busing. I would have to transport them to three different schools. An issue with that is that my granddaughter goes to Clifton. Clifton will not open doors until the school starts live. So with the traffic, people dump parking like New York and go to the schools. That's going to create ridiculous traffic and accidents over there with all these parents taking their kids to school over at Clifton. From what I guess I just found out, one of my other granddaughters is kindergarten. So that would probably under the mandated busing, which she would hopefully have busing. And my son is in high school. With the traffic in Lakewood, I would still be taking him to school. Even if when the weather breaks, he could be allowed to ride his bike, I'll still be concerned because of the traffic in Lakewood. Mr. Fred Rush did bring up the busing for athletics. So that wouldn't be a concern at this point. Basically, that's it. I just wanted to comment as the parent or parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Briggum.
Good evening, everyone. This is Stephen Brigham, Lakewood, New Jersey. My family came to Lakewood, New Jersey in 1970. My father was transferred from Grand Rapids, Michigan to New York City. His job was. And we settled in Lakewood, New Jersey. I went to public school, started in Princeton Avenue when Princeton Avenue was all good. And after a couple of years, my younger sister decided to go to private school. And my parents asked me at that time, "Would I like to go to private school?" And I told them, "No, I like the Lakewood school system. I like the diversity of Lakewood school system." In my classes, we had Jewish students. We had Spanish or Rican students. We had Matam students. We had Caucasian. We had African American. We had a menagerie of different cultures and races in Lakewood school system. And I wouldn't have traded it for anything. I loved Lakewood schools. I can remember sitting right about there in this cafeteria eating lunch. And I loved this school. And I loved this community of Lakewood, New Jersey. I'm a 12th generation American. One hundred and seventeen Brigham's fought in the Revolutionary War. All on the side of the patriots. Captain Edmund Brigham, a direct forefather of mine, in the days of the Lexington alarm, mustered his 35-minute men under his charge, marched all night long to try to intercept the British on the way back to Boston. Lexington and Concord. Got a lot of pride in this country. A lot of pride in this country. And I believe we have the best constitution of any country in the world. Jefferson did a great job when he penned those words. Behold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and endowed with certain inalienable rights. That's the foundation of our country. Equality. Ethics of equality. And I believe that's what we need here in Lakewood is a good dose of equality. Everybody, nobody's better than anybody else in this town. We should have no segregated housing in this town. We should have, with the founding fathers designed for this country, equality. Nobody's better than anybody else. Just came from downtown. Fellow was in Ted City. I don't know by the name of Ron, he's homeless, putting him to die out. There at the baseball field by Martin Luther King yesterday, or I guess it was a couple of days ago now, somebody came into the Sinjin gas station and they decided to make a mockery of a homeless man. He was easy. He's easy bigots. He's kind, he's courteous, he's humble. But somebody decided to ask him, "Will you pour three cups of hot coffee over your head for $7?" Ron, wanting $7, did that. And they mocked it. And they videotaped it as they did it. As hideous. As hideous. Where that stems from? That stemmed from somebody's feeling of supremacy, that they could do that to a homeless person and get away with it? What that person reportedly said that gave that $7 says, when somebody says, "I'm going to call the police because you did that." He said, "The police aren't going to do anything. We control this town." And that's what I'm afraid Lakewood is coming to. These ideas of supremacy, that somebody can do things, get away with it at the expense of the other citizens of the town. And again, I'm a proud American. My forefathers risked their lives to establish a better constitution, a better country that has never been established before. And I don't want to see anybody thwart those ideals of equality. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Briggum, the public participation portion of the meeting. Let's go back and answer some of the questions for both this evening. Ms. Kearney asked a question on the bid timeline in light of the state of the calendar. Somebody address that? Another question, I guess, to you, Mr. Cockus, was about something about mixed gender busing.
Right. I don't know if the protocol will allow. I have four questions from four different people.
Can I just change to you? Is it okay, Ms. Winters? Is it important that Cockus respond to the question?
Okay. Going to Mrs. Kearney's question. First part dealt with the timelines that Tara Vasquez, the Department of Transportation, had developed in the event that the referendum failed. She acknowledged at that meeting that there was a transposition of one of the dates. And she has a corrected timeline handout that's available. So Ms. Kearney and anyone else that might be interested, she'd be willing to make sure they have that. And that timeline is definitely corrected and is available for anyone. The second part of Ms. Kearney's question.
Just interrupt. There's an updated schedule to the last presentation that was given a week ago.
Yeah, it only has, there was one, one date was transposed, the 25th and the 26th of February. So that was corrected on the new sheet that she has.
So what changes? What are the changes?
It just moves by one day the timeline. The second part of Ms. Kearney's question dealt with the, Kearney, I'm sorry, Kearney. Dealt with the co-mingling of students of the same gender from different schools on the buses. The question was asked of me at that special meeting. Are we considering that as a cost-saving measure where it would be prudent to do so to allow children from different schools who live in the same neighborhood to get on one bus and have multiple drop-offs at schools that were of the same gender? And I said that that has been proposed, that there has been some resistance to that. And the reason that was given to me that I passed on at that meeting was that different schools have different levels of discipline in dealing with their interpretations and their own particular set of the Orthodox Jewish religion. And some are a little bit more liberal, some are a little bit more strict. And those differences created some challenges to try to co-mingle those children. So the answer to the question that night and tonight is, it's not no, but there are challenges that we would have to overcome in order to make it work. So it is certainly something that we're looking at, the co-mingling to save money. And it is probably something that we will do going forward. But it will be done in a way that we can work cohesively with the various schools that would be involved so that we would have the least amount of problem in putting those groups together. So I was just explaining that there are challenges even within the same gender because of those disciplines. The second question that was asked was by Mr. Rush. And he asked about the athletic buses. And I just wanted to verify what Ms. Winters nodded. That we actually have six large school buses that are available to the athletics. We currently use those buses for school runs during the day when the athletic students are in class. But during the day, during the afternoons, when they need to be transported, we certainly will make sure that they get transported. And on the weekends, obviously, there's no challenge to that whatsoever. But the athletic program, which is so important to the educational process and the community within Lakewood, will go unavowed. The third question that was asked was by Mrs. Gill. Or the point that she raised, I just wanted to emphasize. She brought up two neighborhoods in the past that were isolated for courtesy busing. The proposal that's part of the referendum, should the referendum fail, the courtesy busing elimination would apply universally throughout Lakewood regardless of the school, regardless of public or non-public. It would be based solely on the distance that the student lives from their school. So any student that lives under the mandated transportation, K to eight would be two miles, nine through 12 would be two and a half miles. Any student that was under that mileage would be affected by a negative result in the referendum. And I'm trying to, the question brought by Ms. Miller. She brought up that the kindergarten students were to be excluded. The kindergarten students aren't part of it. So I just didn't want anyone to leave here with a misconception. This referendum applies to all children, kindergarten, through 12 to 18.
Thank you, Mr. Cockus.
I'm sorry. We've got to ask a question about the meeting on the 14th with the township about the safety issue.
Yeah, I haven't gotten all the questions yet. Okay. Are you the best person to address that?
Well, I said the meeting.
Perfect.
Anyone else wants to hear it?
Thank you.
We did meet with the township to discuss the referendum, the impact of the referendum, should it fail, on both the school district and the township, as we will equally share in many of the results of, should the referendum fail and children, approximately close to 10,000 children, not have busing. In that event, we advise the township of our concerns about the safety of those children, should they be pedestrians. I'm sure many parents that have the ability will drive their children. Other parents will carpool. And in some cases, some of the non-public schools will probably contract for their own buses to mitigate those children losing their board of ed busing. But in any event, there's certainly going to be a lot more pedestrian traffic and certainly more vehicular traffic as a result of a negative result in the referendum. The township was advised of that. We presented a map with the hazardous streets as defined by the township police department highlighted on that map. And we went over the present location of crossing guards and the potential for needing crossing guards in other locations. The township took that under advisement. They obviously had some concerns. And they have agreed to meet as a governing body and formalize their response to what we were able to present to them. But I, you know, I could summarize it by saying that they have concerns about the problem that they're going to face come post-referendum.
Thank you. Ms. Morales asked a question about parental education, Ms. Winters. Do like the parents get applied and so forth? Is that, is that, who's the proper person to answer that?
He's going to ask a question. I think he was that way.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Rush asked, "Did the board members got the presentation that was presented by the monitor last week?" If you can hold off him, I just want to respond to. Correct me if I'm wrong, board members. I think the board members got the presentation at about 5:30 in the evening of the presentation. For those who had attended the board meeting prior, the board indication had asked respectfully that they get a copy of the presentation in advance of that meeting so they had time to study the numbers, understand the statistics, understand the plan and so forth. Unfortunately, because they got it at such a late hour, the board felt the need to cancel the meeting so as not to sit here looking, quite frankly, ignorant and unprepared. They were more than willing and I still think they're willing to sit down and have that presentation presented again so that it can be fed and the questions can be asked. Is there anything else the board would like to add? Okay, thank you. I think I, did we, ma'am, you had, did we not answer one of your questions, Ms. Miller?
No, no. When I was saying that one of my granddaughters was in kindergarten and I thought that it would be under the mandated busing, but he's saying that it wouldn't matter if they're kindergarten or not, which would make two schools that I would have to get to, Hyner and Clifton, at the same time. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Did we, thank you.
I'd like to know, does the board believe that our problem is too overcrowded? Yes or no?
Hello? Mr. Pastor, respectfully, we're still answering the questions and we're not.
So you have my question down there?
I didn't hear that question being asked.
Well, I want to know, does the board believe that our problem is due to overcrowding? Yes or no?
Okay. We'll come back to that. Thank you. Let me just make sure we get all the other questions. I think we did. Do any board members here that answer that question?
Very nice.
Overcrowding being the root cause of the problem is that question?
Yes.
Anybody here answer that? Oh, it looked like you were sitting up to the mic.
But I think the monitor in last March made a statement that Lakewood, after being here for over a year, Lakewood does not have an expense problem, has a revenue problem, and the state is not giving us money. In 2011, I believe, the formula was frozen. We're not even talking about changing the formula. But the part of the formula, I apologize. The part of the formula that takes into account the number of students attending the district has been frozen. So we are being funded at the level of 2011. And the problem is not only in Lakewood. There are many, many other districts that have gone to the Commissioner Heskey, the Department of Education, and said that they're going underwater. They are deficit because the state mandates services. And state is a partner in funding them. State aid, by many end to students, kind of additional money that the district has to spend. In reality, state aid is essential funding for the services. And when the district is growing like Lakewood, and many other districts, we're not unique. And we have an auditor here who is representing many, many districts. There are many, many districts that are growing, have the same challenge. So if we were to fund it at the current level that's in the fact of the statutes, we would not have this problem.
We have a lot to get to on the agenda. So I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public participation portion of the meeting. Sir, how about the public participation section? We have a lot to get to. Did we miss one of your questions?
Did you declare that with the president?
The president asked me to speak on his behalf.
Is it closed, Mr. President?
Motion to close public participation. Motion. All in favor? We'll go back to the report by Mr. Peter Lurch for the end.
What's the report that we are, Mr. Congressman?
Thank you.
Yes. From yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, and the administration president here today. Peter Lurch, Colonel Lurch, Vincent Higgins. And it's my pleasure to present the comprehensive annual financial report for the Lakewood Board of Education for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015. So the report I'm going to give is have the district close its books on June 30th, 2015. With respect to our board's opinion, we did give an unqualified opinion. So that, that's the highest degree that the district can receive. So that in our opinion, as the independent accountant, we feel the financial data and the financial statements presented in the hearing present barely the operations of the school district. Let me just, let me just give a look at the highlights on the finances. The total assets of the Lakewood School District is $71 million. So a little bit over $70 million. $22 million of that is in buildings and grounds. The other $49 million is in cash receivables and other assets. I want to touch on something that I just heard in the, that was just discussed. The actual revenues for the district for the fiscal year, the actual revenues were $122 million, up almost $10 million from the year before. So I just want to reinforce what the board, what the board was saying. The revenues were up actually 9%. The bulk of the revenues was, quite frankly, an increase in taxes. Taxes were raised by $7.5 million, which was a 10% increase. Let me go to the other side of the ledger. The other side of the ledger is the expenses. And the expenses, the expenses only increased by 2%. So the board has certainly shown, has certainly shown fiscal restraint on the spending side. The spending side's only up 2%. And the revenue side went up 10%. Unfortunately, the district started the year in a hole and they closed the year in a hole. Let me, let me just speak to, during this fiscal year, the district also, in addition to the taxes and the state aid that are received, it also received a state aid advance. And a state aid advance, for those who are not familiar with it, it's really a loan to the district. It's not additional state aid. So what happened is when the district closed its books on June 30th, 2014, I'm going a year back. When it closed its books, there was a $6 million deficit when it closed its books on June 30th, 14. Of the $6 million, the state has under the statute, had the ability to furnish or to award the district a grant, the full $6 million. It did not. It gave you $4.5 million. In an ideal world, if they gave you the $4.5 million, you started the year with $6 million in the hole. They gave you $4.5 million. You should have finished the year $1.5 million in the hole because they really didn't give you the full funding of the deficit. Unfortunately, the district actually closed the fiscal year $3 million in the hole. So just to interpret that for the board and for people out in the public, the $4.5 million that was advanced to this district in the fiscal year 15 was not 100% used upon the prior year deficit because a million and a half of it had to go to support the current year operations. So when you did close the books, you did close the books on June 30th, 15 with a $3 million deficit in the general fund operations. In addition there too, you now have on the books a loan that did not exist before in the amount of $4.5 million. And the way that, the way that statute reads, and it's under the statute, and it's due throughout the state of New Jersey, it's not only Lakewood that received that money. Essentially, you're required to, they'll be done one tenth of that amount each and every year for the next 10 years. So that's, that's not to be misinterpreted as a grant. It's actually a state aid loan advance. Let me just, if I just touch on a couple of other issues just globally, or would you like to discuss that? It's up to the board president. I'll let you.
I just have one more question. Where did the $1.5 million go from the advanced state aid?
Well, the one important school. Well, the ones reported, it's clear. Well, the 1.4 million, the $1.5 million was used to support the budget in the current fiscal year, in the 14-15 year. I can't identify specifically where it just went as part of the general support of the budget.
So some of the money that we received in 13-14, we rolled over to support the 14-15 budget? So the 14-15 budget was in deficit also?
Yeah, theoretically, if you would not have received that loan, your 14-15 budget would have been a $1.5 million deficit.
So the budget that we drafted in 13-14 for the 14-15 school year was not, at the end of the 14-15, was not big enough?
That's correct. It was actually, that's correct, there was actually a deficit in the, in the 14-15 budget by $1.5 million.
So we have, we had a deficit in 13-14...
$6 million.
In 14-15 of $1.5.
That's correct.
And now we have about nine plus in the 15-16. So every year for the last three years, and two of the last three years we have the state here, we were on deficit.
That's correct. It is on the deficit. Let me just, and I'm certainly not, I'm just here to report the facts, I'm certainly not, I have no agenda at all. This year, for those, for those board members who may or may not be familiar with it, there's a new regulation that deals with the pension, and I'm just going off of your district a little bit, but I just want to cover this because you might hear it, and it's a national issue, what they call GASP 68. You read about it all the time in, about how the pension's being underfunded. We are now required to report, from your order report, what that liability is, and that's separate above from any deficit that we spoke about today. And the deficit for the teachers, for the TPAF, what we call the Teachers Pension Fund, for the Lakewood School District, the amount of unfunded liability, it's not a deficit, but the unfunded liability, is $168 million. So I just want to, it's 168...
Is that unfunded liability that is supposed to be funded by Lakewood District eventually, or it's unfunded liability that the state eventually has to pay the teachers?
That's a terrific question, because the teacher's pension is a liability of the state. So we, we are not ever, we are, on the current statute, I will never say never, under the current statutes, you are not required to fund that.
I won't be surprised if the state passes on the liability of the teachers eventually to us and makes a right front of $168 million.
Well, let me, let me just, I'll just close this chapter, I'm not trying to, with respect, I think you read in the paper all the time, you've actually lost that bill. But anyway, $168 million in there. Let me speak to the other issue. The other issue is, you do have the public employees retirement system, the PERS, which is, you're administrative people, non-certified people. The one, that one, this liability you are ultimately responsible for because this, the district does pay. That liability, unfunded liability, is $14 million.
What was that again?
$14 million.
And what was for?
That's for the public employees, so it's not teachers. You have two pension plans you run. You have all your certain teachers are in the TPAF, and then you have like the studies, maintenance, you might even have certain administrative people who are in the public employees retirement system. And the way the statute's written, anybody in the public employees retirement system, the board's required to fund that liability.
That's unfunded liabilities?
That's an unfunded liability, correct.
Are we supposed to put money into that?
You do put money into it each and every year.
Okay. So technically, we have $26 million deficit.
Well, I wouldn't quite, I wouldn't quite catch it that way. You have an unfunded liability that has to be funded over the future years, but I would keep that distinct from the actual deficit.
But you have...
You have been paying into that about $650,000 a year.
And how much is it a year? Part of the increase a year, approximately?
Went from 600 to 650. So it went up almost 10%, a little short.
But that's the liability.
That's when you're contributing each year. The liability's $14 million, but what happens is you put the people on, the liability actually increases, you know, it's an actual calculation.
Press, what's that done over the year? Year to year?
Well, well, it's about 9% from last year to this year, what the increase. Now let me just, let me just touch on the state's contributions, because now the state has to pay that TPAF for the teachers. And you read about this in the paper all the time too, how it's being underfunded. The contribution that was calculated for the Lakewood School District was $7.5 million. So that's what you'd have been putting on behalf of the Lakewood School District. They only put in $1.5 million. So this is when you, when you read the whole state problem, how the annual contribution on the statewide system, and this is typical of all, of most of the districts who represent, they're putting in about 20% of what the actual annual contribution should be based on the actual oral reports. So this is a statewide problem, this is not a specific to Lakewood, let me just be candid about that. It's a statewide issue. And I think the interesting thing is, this is the first year it was ever reported, we do tremendous amount of districts in the state, this is the first year that the information has even been disseminated to us to put into the reports.
Is this exclusive to the Jersey, or it's all states?
Well, each state has a different situation. The reporting requirement is national, so everybody has to report it, but I can tell you the unfunded liability varies tremendously from state to state. Certain states are caught up, and certain states are probably, they're checking, not worse than us. I think that kind of concludes the financial aspect of my report. If there's any questions, I'll serve the entertainment at this point.
Anybody have a question?
I think we should allow the public to ask a question of the auditor. Because the auditor was supposed to present before the public spoke, so I think...
And my apologies, it was not...
But I think the public should be allowed to ask questions.
Ladies and gentlemen, prepared to abandon ship, get to the lifeboats beginning. We start off this report by saying, we're doing pretty good. Every word I get, heard after that says, we've got a house of cards in a very windy We have unfunded liabilities that were responsible for the $14 million, state is responsible for the teachers. I don't see any A's coming there. I don't know how, good Lord, if this was a business, we'd all be fired. Because you cannot run a business like this. And the Lakewood School District, you had to think what is a business with your fiscal responsibilities, with making the hard decisions that is going to be a continuation of effort to protect our children, to educate them.
Sir, how may I give a question for the auditor, because we're not reviewing the public, this is really questions from the public towards the auditor.
Sir, how can you say that this is a pretty good report, status? I'm not challenging the report, I'm challenging the reference you made, so it did, you're doing pretty good.
No, the comment I made was that I gave an unqualified opinion on the report, which means that the numbers that I'm reporting accurately represent the financial condition of the district. I did not give an opinion as to the financial soundness of the district.
I think you started out by giving some kind of scenario that said that we were, we were doing well.
I don't believe I've said that.
I didn't hear that. He said that the numbers that he was presented from the Lakewood District, in his opinion, act as represent what's really happened. You know, sometimes the books are not properly kept, you know, that's the way I understand.
Okay, any other questions from the public towards the auditor, Ms. Gill?
I have one to ask you.
Can you use the microphone, please?
I'd like to know if that loan that we have to pay back is in with that liability. Have you combined, that is a liability because we're still on it. Are there any other, what is the total liability? And is that loan to the state that we have to pay, is that considered a liability also? That's one question.
The answer is yes, that loan is classified as a liability, and that is over and above the unfunded.
How much is our actual liability, total liability, and I want to know our total assets?
Funded, and I don't want to complicate this, and I want to answer it candidly, but under, there's two ways of financial reporting. And under the national reporting, which we do on a governmental activities basis, where we include all the liabilities, including the unfunded pension liability that you're responsible for, your actual liabilities do exceed your total assets if I include that unfunded amount. So the answer is yes.
Any other questions from the public towards the auditor? Mr. Lurch. Mr. Lurch, thank you for your presentation this evening.
Well, thank you very much, it's been a privilege to serve the Lakewood School District, and I certainly will be available should any follow-up be requested. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, I serve the agenda, I'm over to you.
I'll be through the chair, please. I'd just like to make a comment. I've been on this board now a year and a half, and I want to apologize to you because I feel, I'm talking for myself, I'm not talking for the rest of the board members, I have failed, I have failed all our children. The young lady that, that a five-year-old granddaughter has to walk in the rain, snow, I can't even picture that. And here we are talking about millions and, you know, a lot of stuff, it's just over my head, I can't even comprehend it. But we're not talking about what the hell are we going to do? I mean, I'm a cancer school. It's a safety issue, how many kids have to die? And then we're going to say, oh, we should have, or we could have, and we did, whatever. But passing blame is not, and separating ourselves is not getting us anywhere. And I feel responsible because I don't feel like, as a board member, I have done my job to allow this to have to go this far. I mean, word of point, there's no solution. There is no solution. But I can't see a five-year-old walking, there's just no way.
And how does the cancer cure the issue?
I'm just making my own personal comment because I learned things tonight that I didn't know. You know, and I just needed to vent. Thank you.
So I'm going to move forward with the, we got the corrections to the agenda, and the corrections are looking like this in the public packet. So if I can get a motion to...
May I just have one additional resolution to the superintendent report on the special matter that we discussed in close session on the settlements? May I read this resolution and add to the superintendent's portion of the agenda, Mr. Thompson?
You can, I would do that, the next thing for the additions.
Okay, thank you, just letting you know, thanks.
So this is just the corrections portion. So if I can get a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Discussion, what is, how is you taking that?
Got it. I'm going to go, Mr. Varell?
Yep.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Djokovic?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hyam?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll go ahead and if you want to read something in, Mark, we're going to be doing the additions to the agenda that reflect the public packet, except the one that we're going to do right now, which is going to be read in.
I'm going to read this resolution, resolved, the Court of Education moves the settlement of the student matter, caption TM, on behalf of AM versus the Lake Forest Education, in accordance with the terms of the settlement and release provided to the board, which is on file under this resolve.
If you get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I think two of the board members, I'm sorry, can I?
So I'll go, Mr. Varell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Djokovic?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Hyam?
Yes.
Okay, now we've got the minutes from the public meetings held on December 16th, 2015. Actually showing, Mrs. Gonzalez, you were not here.
I abstained.
Mr. Davis wasn't here, you know, Mr. Weber, so that's what I was showing. So I'll go ahead and, can I get a motion for that? There's a motion.
Seven.
Voting on the minutes, Roman numeral six on the agenda, page three. If you weren't present, you should have stayed. This is the minutes for December 16th, and the reorganization meeting on January 70th. If you voted on vote, you were here for both, if you weren't here to watch it, but I'm on.
So I go across, Mr. Varell?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsmith?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I abstained on the 16th.
Mr. Djokovic?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Hyam?
Yes.
Yes.
Did that carry, Mr. Thompson?
That was a pop.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's a pass.
What would the vote count, please?
It looks like I've got one, two yeses. Two, three, I'm sorry, I have three yeses.
Three yeses, three nays.
The rest were abstentions, so I'm one or absent. One, two, three stakers.
We had three yeses, three extensions?
Yes.
And zero votes, it does next, requires a simple majority, for the president.
Well, I would just need to do the public meeting for the January 7th minutes. So.
I've got that below it.
I was just wondering. So I've got the public meeting for January 7th. This is for the January 7th.
The organization meeting will be aligned to the officers.
Mr. Varell?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsmith?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Djokovic?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsmith?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Djokovic?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Hyam?
Yes.
So I'm going to go down to the executive minutes of December 16th. The public can end up voting the same as they did on the reorganization minutes. So if I can get a motion, motion?
Seven.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Varell?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsmith?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I abstained.
Mr. Djokovic?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Djokovic.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Mr. Hyam. Okay, so that'd be the same. Now we'll be going on to committee reports.
Basically, some are always by the monitor, which committee you're running, you can find it, right? You have anything for today? Any other committee reports that board members would like to report out? Okay, we'll move on, Mr. Thompson.
Okay, then we'll go on to correspondence, whether or not any. We've already had the recognition of the public, so we'll go ahead on with the business agenda.
Starting on page four. Roman numeral ten, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can get a motion?
Set with the entire portion of that agenda?
Yeah, we did the whole, the whole bit of that.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Burrell.
Yes.
Mr. Goldsmith.
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Djokovic.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Mr. Slade. No, I'm sorry, Ms. Hyam.
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move on to the superintendent's agenda. Page eight. If I could get a motion? Motion. Second.
Discussion.